It's on this lot. And was more reasonable in septic design and and was going to be a whole lot more inexpensive to develop in this way. So with that adjustment, what we failed to do was move this envelope. So what we're basically doing here is we're moving an envelope associated with the previous design that was more central to the property to the south and onto that new area that was added to this from the neighbor from who he was his sister or his sister. Anyway.
Because it was originally just subdivided from a single parcel, right?
Yeah, this the vaulted piece was one piece and was divided. Go ahead.
Can I just interject? I just realized when I had turned on the zoom at seven at six fifty three that I had paused the recording.
Okay.
It was paused through the first hearing.
Okay.
And and so I just turned the recording on. We probably want to start the hearing.
Okay.
Again. And we may.
Yeah, that's.
Have to guess.
Okay.
Won't have to redo that first hearing.
No, no problem.
If we just submit like our, I guess it's in the minutes. That's why we keep the minutes. What will we?
It's just the new, the new state law requires a recording.
Okay. We'll figure that out. There might have been a some kind of time. I forget the deadline. I did read that memo, but anyway, let's start this one over again. So we're starting this hearing thirty four D E twenty four. And who do we have here on behalf of the applicants?
Thomas.
And joining us virtually.
Steve Irwin and Allison Valton.
Okay, would you all raise your right hands? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We have five exhibits submitted by the applicant A one through A five. And we have six exhibits submitted by the town zoning administrator Z A one for Z A six. Can I get a motion to put these exhibits into the record? Thank you, Matt. Can we get a second?
Second.
Emily, thank you. All those in favor of accepting these exhibits into evidence, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. It's unanimous. Okay. Tom.
Good things going on today. I want to start by saying that this is an existing lot, an existing twenty seven acre lot with approved single family residence design associated. What has transpired through the boundary line adjustment was that there is additional property associated added to this lot along more road frontage on this lot than there was. So ultimately, what we're trying to do is simply move the development envelope from where it was previously. It was more central to the lot to the very southern end of the frontage of this newly configured twenty seven acre lot. Some of the issues that that seem to jump up would be steep slopes. I find the the brush with which slopes are drawn on the state mapping is a little bit broad in that there there may be slopes of fifteen percent, fifteen to twenty percent. But there are also slopes of zero to five percent. And our design exploits the flat area and and proposes a house in in a in a something that's quite a bit less than fifteen percent slope. There is on your on your drawing, an old, I don't know if there was ever
Yeah.
a really a sugar house or not.
There was a sugar house there.
Was it a sugar house? It's hard to believe given what the risk.
Little, little K in the.
Yeah, okay. And and it must have been Hurricane thirty eight that took all the.
No, it was.
Trees away.
Wow, no, it was still there when I was growing up.
Well, no, I mean, the trees themselves.
Trees, no, 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 that the maples lined the sides of the roads.
Okay.
Yep.
There's certainly isn't much in the way of minimal vegetation.
Can I ask you a question, Tom, just to make sure I understand it? So this, this is the biggest one. So it's kind of easy to see it's the, well, the one that has the August twenty four revision on it.
Yep.
The schematic. But the red line is the current boundary line.
That is the current.
And that was changed last, last fall.
Yes.
And it used to be basically, I can see the old, the old one in a smaller one. But it, the, the property line used to almost be like an X. And so that would, you had less Bradley Hill Road frontage. Okay, so I just want to make sure everyone that I was understanding that correct.
There was a triangle on the front that was exchanged for a triangle on the back.
It sounded like a three, three acre swap.
So the acre, the acreage remained absolutely the same.
Yep. And as a consequence, you're saying you have more room now to to build a septic system closer to the road or closer to the, the southern corner here. And and it's pulling, I know you haven't got there yet, but it's pulling the the preapproved development envelope down from the ridge, like within it's, it's in.
Well, it's.
It's all within one hundred feet of the roof.
The south.
Yes.
The, the previous was, was still next to Bradley Hill Road. It was just further north.
Uh huh.
And and the septic that was going to serve that building envelope was actually on someone else's property across Bradley Hill Road.
That's an interesting trick.
So what we're managing to do is we're keeping that septic on, on this lot.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. That answered my question. So.
So I mean.
You're, you were talking about, I interrupted you. You were talking about slopes.
Well, I find that the depiction of the, at least on the A and R atlas of, of slopes is a little misleading in that although it, it may be hatched or colored as a particular slope, there are certainly areas within that area that is not that slow.
You, so let me ask you this question. You, there's previously approved for a, an envelope there. It's just kind of a slopy area, the thing's called Bradley Hill Road. It's hill. Is this meaningfully different slope wise than what the previous? And if so, how?
Well, and and maybe I can't tell you because I wasn't a part of the, the previous design. I feel like this is probably has some, some flatter areas within it than the other one. What I can tell you is, is that the soil characteristics are certainly better in that the previous building envelope couldn't, couldn't support septic system. Or I mean, if it could have supported a septic system, they would have designed a septic system in that building envelope and not had to to venture down across the road onto somebody else's property.
Can I ask a question to apologize? I don't know if it's Allison or Steve that might have the historical information here, but why, why was that ever contemplated with, when the, in the original subdivision? Or it? Maybe it was just, that was too, too far to look ahead or something in terms of doing a.
Was the, was the current building envelope ever contemplated?
Well, when it was initial, initially subdivided, do you have to put a building envelope on the new? If you, so when they subdivided it from fifty four to two twenty sevens, you have to put a building, a building envelope on each parcel? And so they didn't, I'm assuming they didn't do a septic test at that time. Like, why would they?
My hunch is.
Why wouldn't they then have configured it a little more friendly, in other words?
It was designed to be two parcels that could each be in current use. I, I don't know why they cited the building envelope where they did, when they did. But it was designed to be two parcels that could be twenty seven acres in current use.
Big enough to be in current use. Okay, thank you. Just curious.
Well, hindsight's twenty twenty.
Sure.
The size of it.
Sure.
And it was because it remained within the family that there was the capability of making that adjustment and having people be willing to allow that adjustment for the benefit of this law.
Got it. So any other, any other commentary?
Yeah, I, I actually, I actually have need some clarity here. When, when you're talking about scenic overlay, is that what, is that the right term? Now, this scenic overlay, I assume, is based on the fact that you can look across the valley and see Moose Mountain and Sparks and Mountain Goo. Is that what makes this scenic? Or is there something about driving up Bradley Hill Road by itself that makes it scenic? That's my question.
There is something about driving up Bradley Hill Road. So the scenic inventory was developed in the early two thousands and it was based around certain roads in Norwich. And the map is essentially following a, a buffer or along these roads to mitigate undue adverse impact along the, these particular roads. What that tends to look like is maintaining or the forest, not cutting down all the trees in front of the house, right in front of the road, maintaining some sort of a screen. So that, you know, you're you're essentially mitigating to the extent possible that, that impact.
Right, because, you know, common sense tells me that, okay, I'm going to go up on Bradley Hill Road. I'm going to buy this twenty seven acre lot. I'm going to want to be able to see across the valley. And they, they're going to want to be able to avail themselves of that scenic vista. And I, I just bring it up because I think we need to be clear as to whether this needs to be screened along the road, which is going to prevent that. But you, whatever it is, is whatever it is. But I, I just want to, I just want to be clear.
Is that, I mean, I, I certainly understand the rationale of your question. It is, you're not, there is no current, there's not building. Is, I mean, there's, we're certainly not handling any kind of, or your office is not handling any kind of permit to build in this.
No.
But the screening is part of it.
To build would be an administrative permit and would be tied to any conditions that come out of this here.
So it's a, it's a relevant question.
And the only reason I bring it up is because a part of my input to the narrative was, you know, my first inclination was, well, okay, we need to talk about screening. But then as I, as I mull it over, I'm thinking, well, wait a minute. Maybe somebody's going to want to see the mountains. And, and, you know, I just wanted it to be discussed and understood, is all.
If, if you all, there are a set of maps in the packet and one of them is the Ridge and Scenic Resources map. That's if, if there are layers that are on the tax map on the town website. And you'll see the parcels highlighted in yellow. There's virtually, there's nowhere that you can put a development envelope that's not either in the ridge line overlay or the scenic resources overlay.
Right.
It's one or the other. It's currently in the scenic resources overlay. There aren't any scenic criteria tied to it. Those are only triggered through a development review board hearing. They're not triggered through an administrative permit. So this new development envelope is triggering the scenic resources overlay standard. So.
So are you saying that our actions tonight? If, if approval is given, would then trigger a review of ridge line protection and scenic overlay afterwards at, at a later time?
No, that's, those are triggered right now.
Those are triggered now.
But it's outside, so the development envelope has been modified to not encroach into the ridge.
Yeah, the new, the new request is, it is, is, is.
Ridge line considerations are out.
Are taking, yeah, take it out of play.
Okay.
And as a consequence, maybe a little bit more so in the scenic one. But it was already in the scenic one. That's what I'm saying.
And Patrick, I have a question I'd like to raise.
Please.
And it's just because in other planning commission discussions, I've heard they're, they've been talking about the scenic resources and how, how relatively vague the document is. And I'm looking on the, I'm looking on the town website for the planning and zoning office and, and the PDF is called scenic resources, scenic resource area draft from two thousand eight. And so I just want to ask, I think we need to identify what, like, and hopefully Kyle can tell us, like, so is it? How is it referenced in the bylaws, et cetera? Like, so if it's, if it's a map that's a draft, how, how, how do we deal with that? How do we process that?
I think that might just be the name that it was, it was given. And then it was adopted and it probably never took draft out. But we have the layer on the tax map right now. So you can look and see the scenic resources area on the tax map.
And also then, is it referenced in zoning bylaws, et cetera?
Yes, it's in, it's in, I'm looking at on page forty four.
Okay.
Natural and scenic features in development review. It's number, number three, it says. You know, the, the development shall be located and configured to avoid undue adverse impacts. Undue adverse impacts to scenic resources identified on maps created in conjunction with the document entitled blah, blah, blah. Development within view of scenic roads as identified shall be designed to avoid undue adverse impact. So I think it's just up to, it's a, becoming on us to decide if in this parcel, there's something about that development, that envelope that is.
Right, but and one thing.
Designed to create adverse impact.
The scenic resources, it says, it says, identified on maps created in conjunction with the document entitled Inventory of Scenic Resources prepared by the Scenic Resources Committee of the Norwich Conservation Commission and dated January two thousand. See map C. Is map C the same one as the one that?
I would, I was, I, it's assuming that if anything, Kyle would have provided us with the most up to date version.
I provide with the, yeah, the version that's on Dymrick.
Okay, and there's just the reason I raise this question is because in planning commission hearings, I've heard, heard them, and this is in the context of solely development, bemoaning the fact that this scenic resources map is not very specific and they're, and they feel like they needed to update it and stuff like that. So that's why I raise questions about the status of this map.
I don't doubt that for a second. I just, I'm not sure how it helps us here.
We have as a part of our narrative offered screening.
Okay.
Just, just.
Yeah. I mean, I think that, again, I mean, that's. It's up to the, I think we, we could take, we should take that under advisement. And whether it should would be a condition or not. I don't like, I mean, it's not my, my reflex or instinct.
Just want to point out, there, there is a map exhibited Z A four D. I mean, that's the wetlands inventory, not from the Vermont State Wetlands Inventory. It doesn't show any wetlands on here, but I did receive a phone call today. And someone was concerned that there is a potentially an unmapped wetland in the development envelope. And this raises a bigger question than just this hearing. Because the Norwich zoning defines wetlands the same as Vermont State Wetlands Inventory. It's their wet areas, their fens, their bogs, vernal pools. But if a wetland is not mapped, at what point do you go and try and delineate that? There is a fifty foot setback from wetlands for all structures, regardless of if it goes through the DRB or an administrative permit. And I'm not going and telling someone that wants to put up a shed, oh, are there wetlands on your property? Because they'll say, I don't know. I'm like, well, go find a wetland biologist to tell me. And then I spend two or three thousand dollars to do that. And so there's, there's more of a broader question of if it comes up that there is a potential wetland, but it's not mapped. How does the DRB want to, to navigate the evidence? Because the map shows that there's nothing there versus.
I mean, our discretion, right? I mean, I guess a site visit in theory or some sort of evidence that was pictured is because wetlands. Yes, there is a scientific definition for wetlands, but I think it's a kind of a common sense. If it's a matter of if it's been, I don't know, I think.
Isn't there a practical element to it from when it's just building and?
The determination of wetlands requires three different things. It requires the right kind of soils. It requires the right kind of, of climate and the right kind of vegetation. And I can tell you that in this area, we're looking at deciduous trees. We're not looking at wetlands type vegetation. The other thing that is necessary for a wetlands to be really considered a wetlands is it needs to be connected to larger wetlands. Am I going to tell you there isn't any on here? Only because I haven't walked every bit of this. But my inclination is that this is not a wetland area.
And again, we're talking about the acreage, the two, what is the envelope? Two acres of this twenty seven parcel where we've protected the ridge. Now, they've said they're, they're not, they're in the right area of the ridge zone. So you're not by definition closer to the road. If you're also offering to have trees, you can't get a view. I mean, I, God bless you.
The other, the other building envelope was much more like to have housed any, any wetland possibilities. Now, across the road, yeah, now you're, now you're getting into it.
Isn't there, isn't there some, there's, there's like in a Venn diagram, the, the original envelope, it overlaps, does it not, with the current one? I mean, it's not exactly the.
I don't think so. The corner of this, of this envelope is pretty close to where the original corner of the other wall is. And then I believe there was some space between the edge of the lot and the envelope.
I'd like to go back to what I think is an excellent suggestion. So I can't take credit for it, but we need a site visit for the DRB to do its job properly. Look at the issues that we're all talking about with our own eyes and then come back and with more information, make an intelligent decision.
Do you want to come, come introduce yourself and?
Is this a break time for the comment or should we leave into your question?
I think it's fine. Yeah, I just want to make sure you introduce yourself on the record. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you just would introduce yourself and address and then we can swear you in.
Yeah, my name is Alicia Lindgren. I'm an abbot over at Fort Higgin.
Okay, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I sure do.
Welcome.
Thank you.
But if I'm taking this, I didn't catch that name. I couldn't hear well enough.
Alicia, A L I C I A. Last name Lindgren, L I N D G R E N.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I just wanted to, I guess, add a few questions and then just some statements about the, the scenic envelope. So having lived on Bradley Hill Road since twenty sixteen and going up and down the road, you know, a lot, I will say that a screen might serve the purposes of a future person who's living on that property, but it would not preserve the character of the road, which is lined on both sides by maples, by hemlock trees, by all kinds of trees that have been there for many years. And so there are some buildings that have been built recently on a road that are visible from the road because they were built in fields, open fields already. But I can't think of anything that has been built along Bradley Hill Road that has removed the, you know, old trees that are adjacent to stone walls that really are part of the character of the road. And so I would just question if there were to be a screen, I guess, as a, as a neighbor and a butter, I would request that the trees of a certain circumference remain on that property. So that would be just one, one sort of request. And then also just this is a notation, I'm looking at the scenic resource map online that was referenced before. It covers the entire front. I don't know if it's a quarter or a fifth of the, the property in question. So it's not like it just covers one corner of it or a different corner. It actually covers the entire.
The entire front.
Frontage, exactly. And, and for the reasons probably that I think I mentioned before. Other than that, I guess my question was, the original development envelope that was in place for this property in two thousand two or two thousand three, was that nonconforming in any way? Is it conforming to current zoning regulations for a new building?
So the, you're talking about the current development.
No, I guess my question is because.
Still the current one.
Right, so, so because this is, seems to be a, a matter of taking an old one that was approved in O two and dragging it to a different part of the property. My question is, yes, it may have been approved in two thousand two, but now that it's being dragged to a different part of the property, closer to the road, is this not an opportunity to say, was that conforming? If it was conforming at the time, but not conforming now, would this be the time to kind of ask?
It is not, this is, this is not closer to the road. They both were abutting the road. This is sliding along the road. So the, the same, the same configuration of the previous is tight to the road, just like this one is tight to the road. We're not, we're not pulling something out of the middle of the property and moving it down. It is simply sliding along the road.
Yes, sorry, if I misspoke, that was what I meant to say for sure. So it was sort of pulled along the, the frontage or whatever, the, the front part of the property. So my question is, if that envelope were to be presented to the development review board today, would it conform to?
I think all we're doing today, all we're doing is, is what, what's? There are certain benefits, I imagine, if that's the right word, to having something that's preexisting. But whatever's put before us today, it's a new development envelope and we measure it against what the current rules are.
Okay.
So that's all, that's our only task, I would say.
Yeah, and, and I'll add that the, the envelope right now, not the one we're looking at, that the, the currently existing envelope was created prior to any scenic overlay. So there are no conditions on development on that envelope. And if you can, you can put a house on it, you can put the driveway here or there. You can cut down this tree or that tree. There's no review triggered for the scenic overlay for that envelope versus if you're going to move it, now we have the scenic overlay. This new envelope needs to conform to that. So they're both comparable in terms of location, but the current envelope has less restrictions than this.
I know.
This new one.
Understood, I guess I'm asking my question correctly. So within the envelope, there is a structure, a contemplated structure of a house, of a house, which is what's triggering the septic plan. So I'm assuming that, that it has perked. I don't recall materials to a four bedroom septic. Is that correct?
It is, uh, there's a wastewater water supply permit for the septic system, all approved, yes.
For how many bedrooms?
Four, yeah, so four bedroom somewhere on here.
Four bedroom home.
Four bedroom, okay. And so my question is, does this four bedroom home, is it within the guidelines? Not the envelope itself, but the building within the envelope. Does that meet the current guidelines of the development report?
We don't, we're not, we're not, we're not, there's no proposal, like, we're not doing that, uh, deciding on that tonight. Like, that's just, the envelope is really just the, the footprint. And so we don't have any plans or any, there's no. And that, and that would be an administrative thing. I think Kyle also said, like, that would be something that you're, I'm sure there are some rules. Once you see, you couldn't be two hundred feet tall, but.
Yeah, the development on.
That's not something we do.
Boundary within which all structures need to be located. There is no requirement in the zoning that you say, oh, we're putting X many structures or putting a house here, we're putting the garage here. You don't necessarily need to propose that the houses at the time that you do the development envelope. So the, the idea around the development envelope is that you're like, okay, within this envelope, you can put the, the structure over here or here, or we'll attach certain conditions that that any structure you decide to put in needs to meet or conform to.
Okay. So even though there's a footprint of a home on this current plan, that is not actually being approved per se. The only thing that's being approved is the septic system and the placement.
We have to, to be able to, uh, justify and obtain a wastewater water supply permit is to show at least, uh, an approximate location of the home. So that's why that's there because it's necessary for state permitting.
So you, like, with the current envelope, there was probably, you know, with the septic system, there's probably a footprint of a house shown. Obviously, there's no house there. Now, there is no permit taken out to build the house. Um, or if so, it expired after two years.
Gotcha.
It, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have necessarily had to have been exactly in where that rectangular had been drawn on the, on the old.
The house would not have to be where, even where we showed for state permitting.
Right.
Right, just within that.
The only thing we're going to make sure is that that septic system is where we found suitable soils for it to exist.
Where it perked properly and I'll give, it's okay. And then the only other comment that I wanted to make is, um, with respect to potential wetlands. I haven't walked the property. It's private property. I have never been on it. Um, but there is a lot of runoff that comes down from the hill, which is above this property, both on the road as well as coming from the back section of that property to the other side of the road. Almost, and I'm not sure how far opposite the pond is, but that pond is, you know, getting groundwater runoff from underneath the road. Um, and within the last three years, because there was such severe flooding on Bradley Hill Road, the town actually came and dug out a very deep trench along the side of the road than this.
Is that pond on the east side of the road?
Pond is on the Lamba property, which is across where they originally had the septic, I guess.
Yeah, the east side.
Correct.
Is it this pond over here?
It's a small round pond that's adjacent. Yeah, that's it.
Cause that's a, that's a.
Yeah.
Oh, pond, yep.
Yeah. But if you, if you look along this side, there's a lot of wetlands along this side of the road as well. And on our property, which is the abutting property right here, we have wetlands all along the road because there are streams coming down the hill. So I can't speak to their property, but there's a lot of.
You're on this, you're on the east side of the, you're on the same side as the pond?
No, sir. On the map, it says plateau. That was the first. E L A T T O, or maybe it says. One of the maps like.
You're going up the hill. You're up. I got you.
But this property line directly.
Got.
But anyway, all I can tell you is the town spent a lot of money and a lot of time digging out a gigantic trench on the same side of the road that this property is on.
Yep.
For water.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Come on down. You know the drill. Come on down. Now, we'd love to hear your name and, and come on down. Please, this is how this works. What, what's your name?
Deborah Hannah, fifteen Powers Road is my official March address.
Um, and, and one more thing. Can you raise your hand?
Yes, I spread the truth.
The whole truth?
All truth, not much.
Thank you.
So if I understood about the scenic overlay correctly, the existing envelope, that, would that be exempt from the scenic overlay? Because at the time it was granted, the scenic overlay restriction.
Mm hmm.
So that, that envelope is grandfathered.
Yeah.
So.
I suppose we could, we could, we could return to that envelope.
You haven't left it. You haven't left it.
No, we haven't left it. No, that's right. We haven't left it.
So can I finish? So where I was going with this line of thought was, so what I see is the choice here is that you keep the existing envelope and you don't have to worry about the scenic overlay until you can open up the beautiful views to cube and smarts and moose and all of that. But you have to put your septic across the street. Or you move the development, you have to have the scenic overlay restrictions, but you get your septic on the property where the house is, if there is to be a house. And that's kind of what I see the trade off is here. And.
Sorry, I have one more question for you and I want to understand that question. Are you, um, you've mentioned your address. Could you say that one more time?
Fifteen Powers Road, which is.
Are you in a, are you in a butter?
I'm not in a butter, but I go up and down that hill.
Okay, Powers Road's off of Bradley Hill Road.
Very top of Bradley.
Got it. Okay. So she, thank you.
So, so I'd like to, to ask if she's an interested party.
That's a, that's a legal, yeah, we'll figure that out. I don't, I, I don't remember that. It's laid out in the thing. But anyway, certainly want to hear your, certainly want to hear your question. Oh, for sure. It's just that.
Oh, yeah.
Anyway, and so your question was.
My question isn't about that. My question is about, um, okay, this property has been on the market, um, for several months now. And is this hard to make it saleable? So the question is, somebody has a choice. You keep the existing, uh, envelope and they can go and do whatever they want to create a view. Or they go with the new envelope. They don't have to spend all that money on this elaborate septic system across the street, but they lose the view. I mean, that, that's what I'm hearing is the trade off. And am I correct?
Well, and, and which leads me back to my original comment that I interrupted you and I apologize. It's that should we, this is a question for the urban and the volatiles. Should we hold on to the existing uh, envelope and simply amend our state permit to put this septic up on this new section? You see where I'm going?
Yeah.
We can, we can get the best of both worlds. We could leave the, leave the envelope down there and, and not have any restrictions.
Is that not?
Have the septic system here.
I'm just curious, I'm just curious, has that not occurred to you before tonight or?
Well, I think we would, I think the idea is, is why wouldn't we want to have a septic system in the same vicinity as the home? I mean, I only.
I see.
It only occurs to me as we, as we, as we discuss it.
Right, right, right.
But, but doesn't this, would the septic system still fall within the building envelope?
It doesn't have the following building envelope.
You would go and get permission. Right. So, but why wouldn't you start with that? Why go to the trouble of moving the envelope? Why wouldn't we start to try and get the septic changed with the existing envelope? But I, I don't know about that.
Uh, well, so anyway, um, hypotheticals aside, I think we have, um, this one, we, we've, we have a lot of testimony now and, and we have one member that is, uh, Don is, is um, suggested a, a site visit. Um, what else can we do tonight in terms of collecting facts or testimony or answering questions that can be helpful? In terms of what, in terms of what, uh, what is before us here? Is that, is that a helpful question or feel like?
Yeah. Else to me to know.
Yeah. Um, I mean, the thing that I took away, like, reading from this was that it's uh, uh, moved out of the ridge overlay and remains in the, the, the scenic. Although now it's i- in a new, in a new envelope, what I didn't appreciate perhaps before tonight was in a new envelope, you have this judge, this, this, uh, weighing of, um, scenic overlay, whereas before it wasn't a factor. But the reality is if someone were to, to build on what's currently permitted, it's in the scene. So would we, whether, would we, would we, uh, defend that or not? I don't know. That's a different question. Maybe that's a good reason to go walk the land.
I guess, and we also got what the, um, effects would be on the interested power, what, what may, we may deem to be interested parties.
Sure. Um, and yeah, I'm counting on that just for, for the record, maybe I'm wrong, but my understanding of screen is trees, keeping trees, not taking trees down.
Or keeping specific trees to be in the character of a neighborhood. Cause like, kind of what I understand is like.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean? And so.
But if you're offering.
About what screening means.
If you're offering to keep screening, I, I, I assumed that meant not cutting down trees.
Typically, it's, it's saying, you know, the a forested area of maybe fifty or a hundred feet must remain undisturbed, something to that.
Uh, along, along a road. Yeah.
Okay.
And so that, you know, obviously that, that, that.
So I've hiked and cross country skied along the top of Bradley Hill Road, including all of your properties and with, with your permission, I hope. And, uh, and the Haddams have done a beautiful job preserving the nature of the forests in that area. I think we do need to go and look and see for ourselves how we can make an informed decision.
I agree.
If there's a wetlands issue and it's not mapped, we should probably go look at, I agree with that.
Do we have any other, okay, do we have any other, in the interest of everyone's time, uh, Tom and, and, uh, do, would you, I'd like to give you a chance, Steve and Allison and Tom to, and any, any final comments? Or otherwise I think we can close, um, maybe the public hearing tonight.
Sure, thanks. Um, so just to, um, revisit a little bit what the previous, um, resident called a trade off. Um, we don't actually view it as a trade off. We view it as a, a positive win for both uh, the residents of Bradley Hill Road as well as any future, uh, homeowner of this land. Um, and the positive outcome is that we're moving the existing building envelope, which is literally up against Bradley Hill Road, back considerably away from the road. And at the same time, moving this complicated septic system from across the street onto the parcel itself, right next to a future home, if someone decides to build one there. Those are the two most important points that we'd like to leave you with.
Thank you.
I guess any other comments on the people who pass it the most, what their opinions are of that area? Basically, just in case if we maybe can accept photos or something else other than a site visit or something that I'm just trying to suggest other ways of we collect information to decide whether or not this spot is good for a septic, which is something I guess can be conditioned upon.
There's a wastewater water supply permit in place.
Thank you. That's, I thank for getting that. And that's for that specific area. It's there.
To second guess whether, whether the state has jurisdiction over the placement of septic systems.
No, thank you.
Yeah, they, they do.
We're not, we're not managed by that.
Right. We don't do septic.
That's correct.
The state does have to.
Yes, and, and I guess that's my point.
Yeah, yeah. Understood.
And, and just for everyone's awareness, um, septic system is don't necessarily need to fall within or, or outside the set packs. They go where they fit.
Well, and, and in this case, we've got two septics that are very close together because people on either side of the line forgave each other for the setback. So that's why they're placed the way they are.
They're, sorry, I just got confused. They're, even though there are, there is, there are currently two septics.
Now, there's a septic system on the adjoining property that serves the original.
I see that, yeah.
And this is the proposed.
That's the proposed, so the.
Whereas one of them's a reserve and one of them is, in, on this lot is the one that's actually going to be built to serve a home on this lot when the time comes.
Right. That's the ask. And then there's a, there's also one on the other side of the road.
No, they're on the other side of the stone wall.
Okay, more, I, I'd like to see it.
Great. Thank you. Um, I, I said, I'm not all that familiar with, um, the process for kind of adjourning and then going to a site visit. So I'm wondering if we not close the hearing, but do a continue.
Continue, yeah.
Uh, because you are going to gather evidence, uh, presumably to then weigh.
Just for, I think my understanding from the regs is it's just a, um, you know, we're just, we're just going and, and, and taking it in visually. We're not like talking to uh, owners or butters at that point.
Right.
Yes. But I think you're still absolutely, that makes it, is a great suggestion in terms of let's, let's leave it. Um, what's the right word? Counselor?
Tabled.
Tabled or continued, will continue until, uh.
I, I can tell you that one of the po- potential motions is, uh, to continue, to continue the hearing. Not, not to close it.
Emily, is that a motion?
Second.
Second by Alex. Uh, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Uh, it passes. Thank you very much. Um, for coming. Thank you, Steve, Allison.
Thank you.
Okay, okay.
Now, I, I think the next, if we're, if everybody's done, what our next step would be to enter into deliberative session once, but members of the public are gone.
Sure.
Well, yeah.
And the motion.
We're just making sure we're getting.
Uh, so, since the hearing isn't closed, um, there will be a continuation of the hearing and a follow up date to be determined. Um, since you all attended this meeting, uh, we just want to go to the, um, and that.
That's what we were asking.
Yeah, will it also be, it'll be posted separately then too? Or because it's a continuation, we don't have to, I see. We want to make sure that these, um, folks are aware.
Yeah, only people, only interested parties, folks that showed up, um, can come back to the continuation.
Okay.
You can't stop then at the second part, be like, I want in now.
John, I'm thinking someone else.
Yeah, I think, I think it's. Thank you.
Allison and Steve, thank you both so much for, for attending.
Thank you too.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Um, can we keep?
We can keep Linda.
One of them's gone into that.
Yes, Linda, um, yeah, I'll just pause the recording. Okay.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
What does that say?
If Hannah has done an amazing job.
And I believe the next official, uh, motion that we need to make is to enter into deliberative session. I do want to make that note, uh, along the way, people have said executive session, but, uh, this board goes into deliberative session.
I move to go into deliberative session.
I second.
And, and who seconded?
Uh, Patrick. All right, we're coming out of deliberative session. Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting if there are no other comments?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Emily.
Yep.
I second.
Thank you, Don. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you for taking notes, Linda. Thank you for guiding us, Kyle.
Linda, I'll send you the names. It's Toy Story and.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll email it to you so you have it. Yeah, I'll, I'll email it to you so you have it.
Toy Story?
I know.